And say, "Pledge allegiance."
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome everyone to our special meeting here of March, uh, May 11th. And, uh, don't want to go backwards in time, right? We're enjoying the weather. And, uh, welcome to new board member here, Michelle Madeline. Thank you for coming in and joining us, and we look forward to working with you. So, yeah. Good deal. All right, so let's start off with Administrator's report on agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media.
The agendas were posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School, and the town of Sugar Camp, the town of Three Lakes, and the town of Monaco. And the media notified included the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, thank you for that. And any amendments for tonight's agenda?
No.
All right, I will seek a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Terry, second by Josh. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by standing aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, none heard. All right. Your first vote, Michelle. There you go. Next, we go to public comments. Uh, hearing comments from visitors regarding agenda items. Would anyone wish to speak to tonight's agenda items? Okay, all right. We'll move on to new business. On to the election of officers. This is an annual ritual that we need to do where we go through our list of officers. And, uh, I'll just go through the process here. And, uh, I'll start off with nominations for president. And I'll call for the nomination, uh, three times. And, uh, after the third call for nominations, uh, I will ask for a motion to close the nominations. And, uh, and if there's any questions after that, uh, we can address them. If we have more than two nominations for an officer, uh, then we'll go to secret ballot. Any questions on that process? Pretty straightforward, right? Okay. All right, so starting with office of the president, um, I will, uh, ask for nominations for president.
I nominate Mike Kunterski for president.
So we have one nomination. Uh, is there a second nomination? I'll call for nominations the third time. All right, I will ask for a motion to close the nominations.
Make a motion to close nominations.
Second.
Okay, motion by Josh, second by Stacy. Any questions? All right, so we can just do a voice vote on this here. All those in favor signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. All right. Move on to vice president. Uh, same procedure. I will seek motions to, uh, for nominations for vice president.
I'll make a motion to, for Terry McCloskey to be vice president.
All right, so motion to Terry. And second call for nominations. Any other nominations? One more time, third call. Hearing none, I will seek a motion to close nominations.
I'll make a motion to close nominations.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll call this to the vote, voice vote. All those in favor signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Very good. Congratulations, Terry.
Thank you.
And go on to clerk. Uh, I will seek nominations for clerk.
I'll make a motion for Stacy to remain clerk if she wants it.
I'll second that.
You're not running away, Stacy? Okay. All right, so we have a nomination for clerk. Uh, calling for seconds. Any other nominations to be considered? I'll ask one more time, is there any other nominations for clerk? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Terry, second by Josh. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of Stacy Klein as clerk signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Congratulations, Stacy. All right. Now for the office of treasurer. I'll seek a motion, uh, nomination for treasurer.
I'll make a motion for Josh. Call.
I'll second.
All right, so nomination of Josh. Any other nominations for treasurer? And one last time, any other nominations for treasurer? Hearing none, I'll seek a motion to close.
I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
Okay, motion by Josh, second by Terry. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of Josh Correll as our treasurer signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Congratulations, Josh. There you go. On to the CISA delegate. Last year, we had... Terry is part of it automatically with...
Yeah, I'm going to delegate.
CISA delegate.
But Colette, I believe.
What's that?
Wasn't it Colette who was our other representative?
It was Colette. Yeah, okay.
Because Terry represented the board.
Right.
No, it was, uh, I was the alternate.
Oh, you...
You were the alternate?
Yep.
Alternate, but somebody served.
So I think it might have been Colette. You said, you know, it wasn't you, right?
I'm quite sure she attended the meeting where we had the resolutions.
She did, she did that, but he was voted as the, as the, as the delegate during this process.
Okay.
For our board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
To represent CISA 9, that's correct.
To represent our board?
At CISA 9.
Okay. All right. Okay. Um, is that something you're willing to do, Terry?
Sure.
Okay.
Surely.
All right, so let's make a motion on that.
I'll make a motion for Terry McCloskey as CISA delegate.
Second.
All right. And, uh, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard. And the alternate? Josh, are you willing to be that again?
Sure.
Okay.
Unless Michelle would like to step in.
No, thanks.
You're good, huh?
I'm good, give me a day, right?
All right, so the chair seeks a motion for, uh, Josh Correll as CISA alternate.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Terry, second by Stacy. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed, none heard. Thank you, Terry and Josh. And we should be set for the year, right?
I think we are.
Okay, very good. Okay, and congratulations to everyone, and, uh, thank you for, for serving in your capacities, so... Moving on to B, consider approval of salaries and contracts for district staff, including extracurricular and busing contracts for the 2022 through 2023 school year. There we go, Terry.
All right. Um, well, my notes are on board docs, but I don't need them because I can talk very well to this. Um, I've been looking at the potential salary, uh, situation schedule since already back in January and watching it quite closely and, um, keeping in contact with other districts around us, other business managers. And as you know, the, um, rate of inflation, the CPI, everything has been very wacky the last several months. Uh, even coming out of COVID, I want to just kind of set the backdrop that where other districts froze pay or did not fulfill contracts, we made sure that we not only did fulfill our contracts, we honored all of our contractors, including our bus drivers, uh, other people who were expecting to make that, their payments along with us. We felt that it was our obligation. So I just say that because I think our district has, and rightly so, prided themselves, this board should pride themselves on taking care of their staff, including our teaching staff, our paraprofessional support staff, our, um, contractors, and our administration. And looking at where things are at, you've been seeing in the news, um, different districts settling at what looked like record amounts of, uh, salary increase, which they really aren't. Their, their salary increases have been at CPI, and some have been lower, but they also haven't been doing a, a yearly or a consistent plan. And when I went through everything, I really felt that what we need to do is honor the intent of what the district has established between the staff, the professional staff primarily, and the school board. And that was somewhat to do with when the district went away from a formalized union, a, um, union that registered and was certified, still kept the same integrity and intent that it wasn't to in any way harm the employee, it was to take care of our employees. And in fact, when the negotiated rate has been collective bargaining agreements at less than 1%, this district has made sure that at least more than that, usually significantly more happened, like 2, 2.5. In the referendum planning, the plan has been looking at a 2 to a 2.5% increase. And who could have foreseen six years ago to five years ago when referendums were being planned and the expenses were being thought about, that we would have had not only a pandemic such as this, but a world in, um, many global crises as we are. So, I know I'm long-winded, but I wanted to set that backstage for you and, and tell you that I feel that it is in our best interest to go ahead, and I will, I gave you one sheet that we move forward with a 4.7% increase for our staff, our contractors, our paraprofessional support staff. And it is a lot, and it is a big hit on the budget. And when I say hit, I don't mean that negatively, but I want to say that's more than a 2 or a 2.5. I do believe it's what is in line and what we need to do because of the inflationary rates. And we have a couple of things that I want to keep first and foremost in our, our mind. Number one, we want to keep our wonderful stellar educators. We want to keep those who have built us into who we are and have made us the district that we are known for. I don't want it to become a game, which it's going on around us. Come here and you will get this, because that is part of what compensation is. But there's a bigger picture. You want to really feel supported, cared about, nurtured. And when I hire someone, and we've been doing a lot of hiring and interviewing this last couple of weeks, my line with the person when I give them the call back is, "We're looking for lifers in Three Lakes. We're looking for that person who their career, they want to build here. They want to make a life commitment." And I know you can't always predict what life is, but that's the obligation I'm looking for, and that's also the promise that I'm making when we invest in our staff. We also have a step and lane scale, which is very unique this day and age. And, you know, even a few years ago, I would have shied away and said, "Probably we should be looking at doing something differently." But it has worked consistently, and it has worked well for the district. I did some review of how the, the steps and lanes used to look, and a lot of the lower end, um, pay scales have been eliminated, so it has shrunk up. And, and that is what you want to try to get to, so you don't have such a large gap between your newest teachers and your most veteran teachers. We have taken a little bit of shift with retirements, and we now have, um, a little bit bigger group, I would say in the middle of the pack, because some of our, um, higher paid folks have retired in the last few years. And I do want to also counterbalance that, though. The people that we have been hiring are not coming in on step one bachelor's degree. That's, that's been a rarity. I think I have one that I will be bringing to you. Most of them are coming with experience because they're seeking out our district. They know our reputation. They are looking to settle, so they're coming in a little bit higher, more of the middle of the road. What I have tried to do, and it's the right employee, is try to match them somewhat where their salary currently is at. And, um, generally, our, our salary schedule here puts them higher than what they're leaving anyways, but it is part of the conversation that I've been having. So in front of you, you have last year's salary schedule, which was at 2.5%. And then you have a tentative draft schedule, which is figured at 4.7%. So you could see where the steps and where the lanes are. I did get this into board docs for your future reference, but I wanted to give you a chance to take a look at this. So you will note that what this does is our, if we hired somebody with a bachelor's degree who hasn't taught, they're coming in at 44... I'm sorry. Currently, they're coming in at 44, 147. And this would move them up to 46, 222. And that is about $3,000 more than the starting pay of the districts around us, between 2,500 and 3,000. Um, some districts may have advertised like a higher percent increase, but they were also including the moving over a lane as well as the step. So that's not as accurate as you might think. You know, that is our process, so we already have that built in. We still have the earning of credits. Um, just very clear with you, um, we've shifted a little bit, and I, I continue to keep developing the language with our professional teaching staff that getting credits just to get credits and move on the, the, um, scale, I don't want to say just to, but without an end goal, we're going to have a lot more, and we have been already much more, um, direct conversations asked to, "How does this suit your personal, professional goals, and how does it benefit the district?" And we're already seeing some payoff there, like we really want to expand into teachers who can do dual certification, transcripted courses with Nicolay, um, the reading specialist type of, of licensure, you know? Some of those emphasis areas that we want to make sure that not only are we paying our salaries, a good salary to our, our staff, our professional staff, but we continue to encourage them to expand themselves and bring this back to the district. So I give you a moment to take a look at this scale, and then I will try to answer questions that you may have.
And that discussion you had, that's part of the evaluation process? Sit down and...
Yes.
Okay, so we have a consideration in front of us for a change of salaries and contracts for the upcoming school year. And the recommendation from District Administrator Terry is a 4.7% increase for district staff, extracurricular and busing contracts. Uh, so we could start with a motion, and, uh, then we can bring it up forward for questioning.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the salaries and contracts for district staff, including extracurricular and busing contracts for the school year 2022, 2023, as presented, um, piece of paper titled 2022-2023 Step Line Schedule.
Second.
We should probably...
Are you talking at the... Oh, I'm sorry, man. At the 4.7?
Right.
So it's the one with the 22, 23 date?
I think it was, too. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, 21. My apologies. And as Josh has mentioned, it's important to get the, the 4.7 noted in that motion, so... Okay, so motion by Terry and second by Stacy. Okay, all right. Uh, any questions?
So, now I think I'm reading this right. The top is the degree and the years, and then the step.
Yes.
Is that like the level they are here? So if somebody were to maybe not be doing what they should, they would remain a level?
They would, they're always going to progress for a year, but as you're going across, for instance, we might have a teacher who says, you know, "I'm happy with..." They wouldn't, but "I'm happy with a bachelor's degree." Or this next two years, getting extra credits aren't in there. They would still progress as far as it goes down the scale, but they won't be going across because they're not getting the incentive to, um, raise their pay based on additional credits.
Oh, the, okay, across the top is the credits.
Yes.
Yep.
And as you see, in the middle, the masters and the bachelors plus 36, because we still have some teachers on staff, or I actually, um, have a new hire that's coming who has two bachelor's degrees in their field. That was the way it worked rather than a master's. But they're still considered at the same level then.
Any other questions? Comments?
Is there anything in regards to if there is a teacher that, that is needing some improvement, is needing some direction? That there is something that might say, you know, "You need to do this before you progress"?
That's a very good question, and yes. If we had a teacher who was in need of an improvement plan, when I would write that plan or their principal would write it, you know, with me under our direction, it would, it could be possible that would say you will stay at your current place on the pay schedule until these conditions or these, um, criteria are met.
Okay.
We do have that discretion.
Okay.
I haven't had to do it. I would not foresee doing it.
Sure.
But it is something that, yeah. It's an option.
I'm good. All set? All right. Okay, so we have a motion, a second on the table, and no further questions or comments. I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion passes 5-0. Very good, and, uh, thank you for all the work that you put into it and, uh, working with the staff on coming together on agreement on this, and, uh, yeah. Continuing to move forward together.
And on behalf of the staff in the district, I thank this board for continuing to support the teachers, support staff, and our contractors.
Yeah. And I think you stated it well. We want to be attractive, uh, continuing attraction. I know some of the districts are kind of scrambling to try to bolster what situation they're in. And we've always, uh, looked at, um, teaching as, um, one of the most elevated positions you can find, so, and, uh, so it's important that we support our staff and, and everyone that works here. Very good. Uh, going to the next, we have consider 2022 through 2023 junior high, high school master schedule modification for enhancement of instructional delivery.
And I'd like to just make a comment. I have C and D listed out separately because they're two different, um, animals when we're talking our elementary schedules and our junior high, high school. Um, but the presentation is put together as one presentation, so that's why I had it set up that way for you. Um, I do this primarily so when you want to go ahead and consider your motions, you're ready to go. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the team, and Carrie is going to lead us off. You do have a hard copy, and it will be behind you to take a look at. I'm going to move into the audience, so I'm out of here.
Okay, so everyone should have a copy if you want to reference anything, or you can just watch up here on the board, too. Okay, so we're going to be talking about some inclusive learning communities. And this is something that's already started somewhat at the elementary level. And looking, as we talk about this a little bit more, looking to transition 712 as well. So just a little bit of a background, um, about special education specifically. I don't know if any of you maybe remember when you were in school and what the special ed programming was like. Typically, um, students who were in special ed would receive the majority of their programming, often a separate, maybe a separate wing, separate room, for sure. Um, so not, definitely not with their general ed peers. So research has shown, and things have shifted with that, research has shown that that is not the best place for students to learn, um, away from their peers. And in addition, they are not receiving that same high-quality instruction, um, access to regular ed curriculum, general standards, and learning from the experts in that content area. So shifting is what has happened with, um, special ed over the years, and more turning towards inclusive learning communities. So what does that mean, and where do we go? Maybe nowhere. There we go. So currently, our district, as many districts around the state, um, we're experiencing some academic gaps between our students in general ed and our students in special ed. And that's just one specific group that I'm going to refer to. Because they have received their programming in a separate setting and not within the general education classroom setting. And I should go back and say, inclusive learning communities, they are not, um, it, it might not be all day long for every single student. It really depends on that student and the individual needs of the student. And those IEPs for those students will drive the services and the resources and, um, the environments. However, when you're thinking about it, we do really have to say, in, you know, our reasoning, why we need educational equity. All students, every child, every day, should have the same opportunities, the same access to high-quality instruction, grade-level standards, and curriculum and rigor that all students have access to. Um, so that is kind of the reason why behind inclusive learning communities. So, I'm going to be able to move forward. Here we go. So why the push for equitable ac- access? So how are we doing overall? This first slide, it may look a little similar to what we had talked about as far as, um, our forward exam results when we talked to the board the last time when we went over our state report card. Um, but if you look at that, these are results over the last couple of years as to where our students are performing based on the forward exam. And this is specific to ELA. So you'll see that all students are kind of in that yellowish-orange-ish color, and then students with disabilities are the red data points. So you can see the trend line actually, over the last couple of years, has kind of been declining somewhat overall for all students. But what's really significant is where our students are performing here compared to where our students are performing who are in special education. So it makes sense, though, that if they're not learning the same things that all the other students are learning or at grade level, then we would see that gap.
So this is ju- this is just our school?
This is Three Lakes School District, correct. Did you have another question with that one?
Uh, you might get to it, I guess. I was just wondering where that falls within the state.
Good question, because there are similar gaps throughout the state, and that's why there is a huge push of shifting. So we're not alone with this data by any means, so... You'll see as I get to some of the other upper-level, um, data points where it compares to the state, especially with ACT. But similar for math. See kind of a, a trend of decreasing overall with all students. The all students are in the blue, and then students with disabilities are kind of that yellowish gold. A little upward tick from 1819 to 2020, 2021, um, but still quite a gap between all students and students with disabilities. And over, I should have said this on the last slide... And over, I should have said this on the last slide, too, but over on the left, you see those proficiency ratings, that's where, how they rank them on the forward exam, so overall.
Do we need to attach anything to the fact that the blue and the red are lower at the ends, or at the current year, I guess twenty twenty-one?
I guess it wouldn't ask.
Well, they're sort of tilted.
Oh, yeah, the downward trend.
What is the downward trend? What's, that's a problem.
That's a good question, right? I mean, that's kind of what, what we're seeing, though, across the state, is that it's a downward trend, I mean, they may relate it to COVID, you know, the students not, you know, being in school for that amount of time, but I think they're seeing that downward trend overall across the state. So, but it's, it's interesting. This is just one piece of data, again, you know, that we're pulling from.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three are really going to be interesting to see.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see where it goes from there, yeah, definitely. So things that we need to focus on, we have federal identifications, and then as, over on the left, that's through IDEA, so we are responsible to meet all students with disabilities, meet their needs in the least restrictive environment at the district level, but then also on the right, at the school level, we, we are responsible for enhancing outcomes for all students. So as we get into how this impacts us and how the schedule will impact everyone, it'll get into a little bit more detail with how, how it will look big picture for everyone.
Are you going to talk about funding levels at all? I was kind of curious that everybody knows that the.
Justin's getting into funding.
The IDGA. That the IDGA is not pulling their weight for funding levels.
Yeah, I think we're just controlling on what we can control, or we're focusing on, you know, what we can control at our level, but Justin will lead to that.
Sure.
Okay, so one, as I said, the data points with the forward exam is one example of looking at that achievement gap, and a reason why we need to shift gears a little bit and look at inclusive learning communities. And this is also another important data point that we need to look at. So Wisconsin has what's called a state performance plan, and that's DPI's way of improving outcomes for students with disabilities. So, and the Office of Special Education monitors DPI for every district, and you have all of these reporting data points that each district has to submit, and then you get kind of an overall score as to how your district is doing. So they look at all of these different areas, all these different indicators, and way over on the right, there's points given to each one of these areas, and this is only specific to special education, where we have to, Nikki was probably the one who entered all of this last year and previous years, but based on special education and how we're doing in these different areas, we get these points, and then our overall score, we're supposed to be at about eighty percent, the district is at around seventy percent. So based on the seventy percent range, it, we fall in this, Three Lakes is currently in this needs assistance area, so that's year one. So it's saying, you know, do some things proactively so you don't end up year two of needs assistance, needing assistance, because then we, as LEA, really have to put gears into motion and start making some changes. So you see a lot of twos on there, which is good, the NAs are just, you know, one of those things where the sample was probably not high enough to record what our points would be, and the first two that have zeros, those are grad exit indicators, and what we found is our dates just weren't driving, so if we had a student graduate, the IEP was not ending on that same, same graduation date. Our graduation date is May twenty-seventh, the IEP has to end on that date, and so we have a zero because they weren't entered correctly. So that, that's an easy fix. Same as the next one, the dropout exitters, that really relates to like students who shift between different LAAs or different districts, and then we don't end up knowing where that student ends up, and then it's not entered correctly. So that's another thing that's really an easy fix. So moving forward, we'll make sure that we have our dates lining up, and then all of our, our students are tracked that way, so we know where we're going, and we don't get zero points there. I guess the one, the one biggest area that I'm going to talk the most about is this ed environments where we have zero there, and that kind of relates back to the forward exam data points. So ed environments mean where are the students receiving their special ed services? We want the majority of our students to be receiving special ed services within the classroom, so we want them to be spending eighty percent, at least eighty percent of their day, in the regular ed classroom. Ours came out as zero because we have too many students in the B area, so from like forty to seventy-nine percent of their day, they're in a different environment besides a regular classroom, and we even have some in the C for even less. And like I said before, it's, it's really going to be driven by IEPs, however, students who are pulled out of the classroom more, they're going to, you know, that gap is going to get even bigger, so we have to just make sure that we're, we're doing what we can to meet the needs of the students in teaching to the diversity within the classroom. Does anybody have any questions regarding this? I will have to say, too, there are many different special ed identification or disability categories within special ed, and the highest category that is pulled out of the regular ed classroom setting would be students with learning disabilities, around forty percent at the elementary level, and it's over fifty percent at the junior high high school level.
So Carrie, just maybe jumping ahead a little bit, what we're talking about, this delivery enhancement, are we talking that that's going to affect this educational environment factor?
The delivery enhancement?
Yeah, is that going to address that?
Yes, yes. Yeah, and that's, so I said, we're starting to do, this year, we were starting to do some of that at the elementary level, where students were receiving, they can receive specially-designed instruction right within the classroom setting. So some of our, our special ed staff and our paraprofessionals were pushing into the classroom and doing some accommodations and modifications right on the spot, and working with the classroom teachers, so the student didn't have to miss, you know, grade-level instruction, but, and still hear that content area, but get some specially-designed instruction, too. And that may also happen, in which the principals are going to get into a little bit more about the schedule, but that also may happen where they, let's say a student has a reading disability and needs instruction, like at their, their struggle in reading fluency or basic reading skills, they're going to get that intervention time at a different time in addition to what they're getting in the regular classroom. So really, if you look at it, the students are, are getting more than less.
Yes, I have two quick questions.
Yeah.
I mean, are you seeing, especially with that ed environment?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, do we have, is it more of an administration and, I guess I shouldn't say administration, organization, you know, as far as how we do what we do right now to keep them in the classroom, or are you seeing a need for more staff to work with this?
I mean, I guess ideally, like long-term, what would really be ideal would be co-teaching situations, and it would be amazing if we could have co-teaching at every grade level, but that would, you know, that would mean probably more staff, but there, you know, co-teaching can happen like across three grade levels pretty, pretty well, with one special ed teacher working among three grade levels, and working primarily in that, in those core content areas of like reading, ELA, and math, and having more paraprofessional support in like science, social studies, those other type. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Do they take any, I mean, some kids like getting pulled out into, you know, a special situation where they get to work one-on-one, where they maybe don't feel like they're in the spotlight, you know, getting worked on, do they take that into account at all with any of that?
I think, you know, and that's what relates back to those individual education plans, is that really based on what the student needs, or is it driven by like our schedule? I've, I've seen a lot at the junior high high school level, and not just here, but even in my previous district, where we would write IEPs based on the bell schedule, like this student needs forty-five minutes because that's what our class period is, or ninety minutes because that's what our class period is, and I think that's what resulted in some of our, our zero points in ed environments.
Sure.
So, but I think, you know, that's, it's also a team decision and what's in the best interest for the students, too.
Okay.
So I'm not saying all students are, you know, they're never going to have that specially-designed instruction in a.
Right.
A smaller setting, because there are some, some areas, especially like speech and language, where you're working on speech articulation skills, and, and that happening in the general ed environment, the drill and practice, it's not the ideal environment when you're working on carryover of that, the regular ed is definitely a good environment for them.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to throw this up here, too, so obviously not, not being in the, the general ed environment, most of the day also relates to a lower number of students who are proficient on the forward exam in ELA and math. So this just gives you a kind of a breakdown of how our students with disabilities, so that would be the percentages on the left, compare to our students without disabilities on the right. So proficient advanced, we still had fifteen point seven percent, so we still had some kids who were proficient in advance compared to the students without disabilities at forty-three percent. And then you look at basic or below basic, that number's a lot bigger for ELA, and then if you look at math, it's pretty, pretty similar. And this is looking at students specifically grades three through eight who had taken the forward exam. So keeping in mind that trend a little bit, we go up to the ACT in grade eleven, where all students take that, and our most recent data shows that we didn't have any students proficient or advanced on the ACT in ELA, and that's in comparison to six point eight percent at the state level. And then ELA is, I think it said it was around a twenty for being proficient on the ACT, which is, that's a pretty, it's a decent score. And then math, again, the same scenario, we didn't have any students who were proficient or advanced in math, and at the state level, it's around four and a half percent. And proficiency in math, they're considering that's around a twenty-two. So, but you can see, though, there's a shift over time that, you know, more inclusive settings, at least we're, at some point, we're having some students who are proficient in advanced, where if they keep on being pulled out into more of a, a resource room setting and not being exposed to that grade-level curriculum, then that gap is just starting to widen. Josh, you want to just come over and advance that slide? All right, very good. So I alluded a little bit to inclusive learning communities, and as I mentioned, this is not just a push here for Three Lakes School District, it's a push statewide as, as DPI is seeing similar trends in data. So, and overall, we know that this is the best for our students. We know that, you know, the best learning comes from the experts, the content areas, special ed staff, when, when you get your degree in special ed, you're not an expert in reading, you're not an expert in math, but you do have some of that background, training and knowledge, but really, the expert content areas are those people who are teaching those core classes. And since we are, you know, our forward exam is showing us some data to push towards inclusive learning communities, as well as our IDEA and ESSA reports and our federal identifications, we're, like I said, we're in that needs assistance year one, so it's saying you need to make some changes and do something so we can see some of this improvements on your end. Thank you. So how are we going to do this in inclusive learning environments? So step one is going to be exposing those students to that same curriculum, being supported with teaching staff and with the special ed case managers and the paraprofessionals, similar to what we have been trying already at the elementary level, but looking at, you know, moving it on up throughout our grades. And really, we're, we as an administrative team are working a lot on building that professional development for not only our regular ed staff, but our special ed staff and our paraprofessionals as to how, how does that look to teach to diversity within a classroom? Because there's, there's not one learner that is the same as every other learner, so we already have a lot of diversity within our classrooms the way it is. So on top of the inclusive, inclusive learning communities, the principals are going to talk a little bit about the schedules and what that is going to look like as well. I think, oh, there we go, now it worked. Justin is going to talk about specific junior high high school.
I promise I can do that, but there will be no funding.
Sorry, Terry.
So, like, is that working?
Well, it, it moved that last one, so I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Josh is on the.
Just throw something at me and I'll.
Yeah.
That's fine, you have to sleep, and I'll pick you up. So Carrie talked quite a bit about one of the whys, and, and that pile into this, it's a modification, it's a change, not huge, like if I were sitting here telling you, oh, we're going to go to block schedule, or we're going to go to a trimester plan, that's a huge change, right? This, this how, that matches up with at least one of the whys that Terry's talking about, or Carrie, Carrie's right behind you. There, there are a lot of different things, and we'll talk about them a little bit in the next slides, that contribute to, that are also whys. This, this provides some of the vehicle for the instructional delivery that, that Carrie alluded to, for sure, but before I get into the, the reasons and the suggestions and the pluses and potential minuses of this tweak, I want to show you what it looks like. What we're currently in now, the, at the junior high level, for sure, my predecessors had some inkling that we needed to do something a little different, and in junior high, there was this enhancement period that we're working with right now, and in, in the enhancement period, it's, it's a good idea, it's a good, it's a good start, it really is, it, it starts to break the ice to where we're going a little bit deeper now. But this draft you see up in front of you right now is, is a little bit more, taking another step down the direction of getting kids the opportunity to have the interventions they need, and getting kids the opportunity to get some enrichment activities, which, which is what we're trying to do at a very small level, kind of a pilot basis with the enhancement period this year in the junior high, okay, with, with the seventh-grade group. Anyway, long story short, what you don't see here is an everyday homeroom, okay? The feedback I was getting, students and staff alike, eh, who are we supposed to do The feedback I was getting, students and staff alike, eh, we're supposed to do a homeroom, okay? Uh, it's really, as it was set up, really not quite enough time, as much time as I would like to have to really dig into much of anything. Good, good time for announcements, sure. Um, but it wasn't, e- 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 even from, from a club or activity standpoint, uh, if you're going to have a meeting in ten minutes, you better get cooking, right? So, so, so not quite enough time, everyday connect, yes, that's good, that's good. But we're, we're, this, this is following the feedback a little bit with our staff and students, okay? To, 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 to take that away, that, that, that homeroom period, divvy it up. Some other feedback that I've heard loud and clear from our educators, uh, we don't quite have enough time in the current slot, all right? We're operating, you know, forty, forty-five minutes or less. Uh, now, now this is going to give you a few more minutes, right? Per each hour. Uh, the, the, where we get those minutes are a combination of, uh, you, you, you see that there is no eighth hour, the Blue Jays win time that probably all three of us principals are going to tell you a little bit about. But along with the homeroom not being there, you also may notice, or may not, your, your, your kids probably will, um, we shaved a minute off the passing time. Uh, there was currently a four-minute allotment for passing time. Uh, this, this model, this draft has a three-minute passing time. Uh, trust me folks, if my old carcass, and we time this out every which way from Sunday, but, but if I can walk from Mr. Schreiber's room, uh, down there in the music wing and hike all the way over to the other corners of the building, like where, uh, Steve is or, or down by the fab lab, and if I can do that and my stopwatch says two minutes and eleven seconds, trust me, every kid in our, and, and I dawdled and stopped by some lockers on the way just for fun. Uh, if I can do that in two, two minutes and eleven, every one of our kids can do it in, 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 in three. Anyway, that's, so, so if you hear rumblings at home, that's where that's coming from. They're getting a little less passing time.
Or just expand your FIAE program.
Sprinting time should be
Right on.
I remember when I was in school and they did that, I remembered rumbling about that, same thing.
You got it, you got it. And, and, uh, trust me, once we get all these things fine tuned and you folks have an opportunity to take, take a kick at the cat and see, or at the can, I should say, you know, I am cruelty, but take a kick at it and, and, uh, this becomes a finalized finished product. Obviously, we're going to do a big, uh, you know, I'm sure Jen and I have already talked about some of the information we need to get out to our, to our folks. Students know a little bit about it because they just went through the registration process, but, um, haven't even shared too much with them about some of this stuff because, uh, I don't want to get out ahead of, of you guys knowing about what's going on or what we're proposing to go on. At any rate, um, you also notice, for those of you who have kids in the junior high, high school, the junior high lunch, it's flipping, uh, to be the earlier of the two between junior high and high school. Okay? Reason for that is simply a numbers game in the cafeteria as the elementary crew rolls out of there. The other thing, uh, I, I think, were there other reasons that I'm, that I'm leaving out there, Steve? I, I think that was the main one for that, uh, request. Also, um, uh, there's something else that went, well, yes, you'll notice, you'll be like, hey, hey, Zeus, if you, if you're planning a three-minute passing time, you got a little bit too many there between the couple hours. Uh, you'd, you'd be right. Uh, we, we, we built in, we built in a little bit longer period of time there, um, between second and third hour, uh, simply because that is giving us a little bit more room for our ever blossoming, uh, second breakfast, late breakfast program. The late breakfast program that we, we tinkered with, we piloted this year, I guess, if you could say, tried it out. Took our breakfast numbers from about twenty to twenty-five students up over one thirty-five. It's been as high as one forty, uh, eating breakfast now. Will that change if free breakfast or free food goes away? Maybe, maybe, if it does, if it does change in a big way and we don't need that anymore. But I'm telling you right now, Tina and the crew have a heck of a time getting everybody through. And, 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 and we, we do it right about there. So, at any rate, it's a great thing that kids are eating. That's a great thing. It's, it's good stuff. So that's a good problem to have. We, we adjusted slightly to make a little bit more room in that so we're not missing class time. This, this basically gives you, depending on the hour, forty-eight, forty-nine minutes per each instructional time that increases, uh, roughly seven minutes of time per each class. Can you hit please, Josh? Oh, there will wind, all right, all right. So as Kerry very well laid out, um, there's a lot of research that goes into why we do things like this. This is not, uh, principal's board, so let's figure out something we can tinker with in the schedule for fun. Like th- 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 this is stuff that, um, w- w- we're doing because it's been proven to be, uh, effective. Uh, a lot of the things you see in here are, are best practices that, you know, when we, when we collaborate with neighboring districts, the, these are things that are working. We're not, you know, like, ooh, let's just try this and roll the dice and see where it lands. Like th- th- these are some things that are, um, pretty established as successful practices. And certainly, uh, it's last up there, but it's not least internal feedback. I touched on that a little bit, like a lot of what you see here are things that I've, uh, with my, my feet on the ground here, uh, in my ears from staff, from students, um, that we're, we're hoping to make the, the program just a little bit better, okay? That's one of them. Uh, we're, we're getting a few more academic minutes per each hour, all right? Reduces traditional study hall time. Um, thi- this one, you, you may hear from your kids. I know I heard from mine, what? I can't take study hall? I, I, I can't take two study halls? Come on, I need that time, I got a lot of homework. And, and, and never in a public school can I say too many statements that cover everybody, right? But I will tell you that my own observations, certainly the observations of our professional educators would say that as a whole, we have too much study hall time, too much study hall time. Like, and, 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 and sometimes when I walk by study halls, I tend to agree. I really do, okay? And, and what this schedule does, and this is, this is something that, 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 if you do the math, and each and every one of our teachers has seven more minutes with those students, what's seven times seven, folks? There's your study hall. Except, except the minutes are with the professional educator in that subject area, rather than say spend your forty-nine minutes in the library or even in a guided study hall, a little bit more structure and a little bit more help available. But it might be Sarah, Steve in the guided study hall, and what if my problem is in math? And you're maybe great in math, bad example. But the point is, the point is, uh, you, you know, and, and I've already started the conversation with, with folks, with, with our educators about, hey, you're going to have students for a little bit more time, let's make sure some of that practice time is done right there, right? Rather than when they're home, because if he gets past sixth grade math and history, I'm not helping, sorry. I'm not at, at home or, and, and you get what I'm saying. Yeah, 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 for real, for real, for real. But so, so as your students that you have at your house, and, and we will, we will work with, and we have been, um, are, are throwing their hands in the air and pulling their hair out about, geez, you're taking away study, a study hall from me. Uh, reality is, uh, I, I, I like it better because that time is spread out throughout the day. And not that all our students aren't absolutely motivated learners, but sometimes when you give them that forty-five minutes on their own, they may not get at it. And then yes, it will be your problem at home if you're asked to help with the homework, right? As, as a parent, but, um, just a, a little different way to, to shake out the minutes for sure. Uh, homeroom time, we touched on, uh, briefly. Uh, a lot of feedback right now, kind of shrugging their shoulders, well, yeah, it's nice. I can see the kids every day, but, but what are we doing? Are, are we able to accomplish some of the things that we'd like to accomplish? Maybe not, so we're going to try a little different model. Um, and I talked about the passing time being reduced a little bit with the exception of that late breakfast passing time. Bringing us to Blue Jays win. Uh, you saw that as the last thirty minutes of every day uh, because everything in education, we want to have an acronym, right? The win is what I need. This is something that, uh, we will have across the board and I'll let the other two principals talk about their specific ends of the building. But here's what that is. Um, the, the, when I talked about the vehicle for delivery of some of our services, uh, this is, this is the big one I'm talking about. Yes, if I speak, step back for a second to like the junior high schedule, there will be opportunities for, uh, our, our, our reading and event, reading interventionists to provide service to our junior high kids during our ELA blocks in the morning. That's still in play, that, that, that's in play and we've jostled with the schedules or arranged the schedules to make sure that they're, the, the, the kids have our interventionist available at that time. That, that, that's all part of it too. But the Blue Jays win, uh, period of time is also an opportunity, a, a, a vehicle, if you will, for delivery of services, all right? Uh, and, 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 and that's at the, at the top of the list and Kerry did a really nice job showing why, why we need to have a little bit more of a bolstered and, and, and an intentional system of the, um, the EMLSS, the equitable, right? That's what the E stands for, multi-layered system of support for our students. Because if, as I talked about the junior high schedule, my predecessors took a nice step along the, the trail to, to do the enhancement period. Same thing with the high school, with our collaboration hour, okay? The collaboration hour is a time where, uh, teacher's available, students come on in. Works really well. If I've got a third hour study hall period and I need their he- help with my English paper and Mrs. Steve has got a third hour collaborator, works great, okay? But what if I need help in biology and my study hall is six hour and Mr. Stotts has got a class in there? Shoot, okay? So, so it was a great step and now this is the next step in the progression because this is going to have everybody available that period, that, that, that timeframe of the day. So, so there will be more access to a wider variety of professionals, okay? Increased opportunity to provide enrichment and enhancement options for junior high and high school students. This is an important one because, uh, we, we don't, uh, only create this time for struggling learners. We create this time for learners who need to be challenged. We create this time for learners who need, another reason why, okay, I'll go to school, okay? Because, uh, i- i- when we organize this all, and it takes a little bit of organization, okay? I'll, I'll, I'll pick out a teacher. L-Votus won't be providing science intervention or, or economic support every day of a five-day week. Some days he may be scheduled to do that, uh, work with the kids in chemistry or physics, okay? That, that need help in physics and, and, but some of the other hours, he, he, he might be working kids through a welding project to, to, to build fire rings that kids can sign up for. Or he, he, he picked out, picked on Mr. Votus. He might be working on, uh, some, some form drills for the trap shooting team, okay? That might be one day of, of a week for him, okay? Th- th- this is an opportunity for students to, yes, get support and, and, uh, accelerate, potentially, uh, potentially something that might not even be necessarily related to a academic subject, okay? I'm going to pick on Luke Stotts because he came to me first months ago and said, hey, if we ever get this thing to go, I'd love to, I'd love to teach a flight tying class, you know? Things like that. And so I've, a couple of times now had conversations with our staff about, think about something that trips your trigger and might trip students' trigger as far as interest and, and excitement.
Justin, I threw out that one, I've got
Yeah, 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 go for it.
I had a student approach me and wanted to learn about photography and didn't want to enroll in yearbook or use that avenue. And so this would be a time where I can say like, let's learn some photography.
Yeah, and as, um, uh, a- as I mentioned, y- y- you now have your entire K-12 staff available, so you can connect with the specific teacher you need. The, the traditional study hall model is either you have a paraprofessional or a professional educator i- in the room, and they may be able to help you if it's a different subject, but maybe not, right? Um, so, so, so this is why, um, this plan's in place. And, and, and I'm not, I'm not sitting here telling you this is something brand spanking new that we just dreamed up. This is something that we're, we're doing a full-on copycat. This is in place in a lot of places, okay? And it's working well, um, which is why we're bringing it to the table here. Uh, I also want, want to mention, and, and because I want to be sensitive to, to everybody and understand that there's a lot of different viewpoints when you come into a public school, okay? As it sits right now, it is the plan that we, when we start to throw out options in our, in our scheduling system for this, that if I'm a seventh grader, I would have the same access to pick and choose an activity to go, to go into, uh, Jen's photography session as a twelfth grader, okay? I'm good with that. At face value because it's a supervised in-school activity. But I want to be completely upfront with, there might be parents who say, wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. I did sign up for this junior high separate from high school. I don't want my seventh grader with twelfth grader i- i- in, in a session. And if that's the case, we will be sensitive to that. And it's, it's, actually the program that we'll probably use for this is called Flexisケ is very flexible, okay? And if there are criteria like that that are parent-driven, we can certainly put that into the, into the mix. Um, the way Flexisケ works, folks, is, uh, a- 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 all the educators in the seven twelve will have a period of time in any given week where if they want or need students for academic intervention or academic support or to catch up on work, they can select them and jupe, you are now, w- w- when that student opens up their schedule, they're, they're in there for, for whatever days. And if now, and, and, and so the timeframe is, let's say they have to have their schedule request for the students by Friday afternoon, Monday morning, eight o'clock, students come in, they open up their Flexisケ account and they're going to figure out, ooh, yep, you know, uh, on Monday I got to be with Mrs. Steve, on Tuesday I got to be with Mr. Hermanson, on Wednesday I got to be with Mr. Votus, but ooh, look at this, Thursday and Friday I'm free, so doop, doop, I'm going to pick those two selections, okay? Or, oh, shoot, forensic meeting, uh, is, is, is for this one, so I can't, I can't do that. But, but, but that's how it works, that's how it works. So, um, I'm sure there will be some, some, uh, growing pains as we meld into it, but the good news is there are a number of staff members here who are going to be our in-house experts because they've come from districts that have been using this Flexisケ plan already, okay? It, it, we can set the parameters, like, okay, maybe every other Thursday, this list of clubs can meet every other, you know, we'll, we'll set a club day, we'll set some parameters, so it's equitable. Um, you know, this advisor, that is advisors and hogging all the precious days where we can do, uh, activity meetings and things like that because, uh, the meetings for the activity isn't a primary goal of this system, but it is definitely a time where everyone's available, so, so, so you can do it that way. Uh, this is also a benefit of this time is maybe, uh, two Tuesdays a month, there's time where, uh, you can do some vertical teaming and, and staff collaboration work because oftentimes, especially in a, i- i- it'll be nice that, uh, junior high and high school are both on, a- a- and for that matter, uh, elementary are all on the same program because we can do some vertical teaming then too, um, not just specific junior high, high school level. And I mentioned Flexisケ, that's kind of the direction we're looking at, uh, not super spendy, which is awesome, um, and fairly easy to use, uh, according to the folks that we've, we've spent some time with, uh, zooming with the Tomahawk crew and we have a whole bunch of Rhine-Lander crew that's here. Then both those districts have a similar type of program in place, so. That's a junior high, high school for the most part. I think that's it for me. Yes, and with that, I'd like to, well, first of all, any questions on junior high school? Yes, go ahead.
So what does that do to the current classes that they've all picked? So that'll eliminate one?
No, 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 no. R- r- Ryan has, Mr. Bach, I should, I'm sorry, has, um, had this in mind when we
Right.
Yes. So if they chose eight, which I don't think he allowed, then there will be a problem. But I think the most he had anybody choose was seven.
I'll have to check because
Okay, yeah.
Because I know my boys in particular were like, well, I might have to not take something, so I don't know.
Yes, yes.
I'll try.
And, 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 and please know or coach them up that if, it, right now in the current situation, if they were to say, I don't have any study halls, it'd be a deal breaker to them. Like that's, that's rough. In this situation, to not have In this situation, to not have a study hall is a little bit more palatable, for sure.
Couple more questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm just kind of dialing back a little bit. I mean, years ago we had the eight-period day, we went to six and then back to eight. And now I see this as a seven-period, basically.
Yeah, so it's kind of a, it's kind of a...
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Halfway, like a little bit of both, yeah.
And I think there's a lot of merit to it.
Yep.
Because one of the reasons that we went from an eight to a six is, especially in any classes that had any labs or anything like that, it was rushed.
Yes.
And when you include setup time and takedown time, it was difficult. And in sixth period, I think we lost a lot of our access to electives and stuff.
Right, you eliminated a choice, yep.
And so now it's...
It's a compromise.
If I call it a seven-period, how, what does that do for our students that want to choose electives compared to where they were, say, this year?
Okay, so, and Ryan and I have talked this through a million different ways. Most of our students, most of our students signed up for a study hall, six courses, maybe seven in a study hall, as it was, okay? Yes, mathematically speaking, there's one less option on the table. But, but nobody, nobody took all eight, nobody did.
What it retained was the semester, so when it flipped two years ago from the sixth to the eighth and it broke classes into semester-long classes instead of year-long classes, this retains that semester-long classes. There's still elective options because one semester looks different than the second semester.
Yes.
So you see it's still there, more so than you did in the sixth period.
Yep.
Well, I think so, that opportunity during that win time too is a chance for students to get into those areas, similar to electives, you know, where their interests are.
Yes, and I would say, right, wrong or otherwise, we did require every student in the junior high to select an elective rather than having the option of selecting two study halls. So, so, but I think that's just, that's just, that's just a good idea because we want kids to get a taste for something that they might jump into. Once they get into the high school, there's more options. So, generally speaking, Mike, I don't think we're eliminating any opportunities for kids to take elective because as it was, nobody was taking eight courses. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, they weren't taking an art band and a chorus.
Yes.
Now they might, you know, they're probably taking band and chorus and not art at that time.
It's, it's going to be a little bit stressful for some students and we saw that in the registration process, when they look at it, they go, "Where's my study hall? Where's my study hall?" You know? But, but, but there wasn't anybody that said, "Oh, my gosh. I've been taking, I've been looking forward to taking this elective all my life and I can't..." There, there was nobody who was complaining about... Yes, there's always choices you have to make at the end of the day, especially for a kid who wants to be in classes, that wants to learn, you know, I'm excited about it. Yeah, you, sorry, you got to pick because you're not going to take three or four. But it, it, it was about the same as it been in the past as far as elective choices are concerned.
Well, I was just going to comment on the study hall too. I think, didn't Tomahawk have options for study halls at certain time? Like maybe once, twice a week?
Are you talking about, are you talking?
During when? Yeah, during when time.
Yeah, 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 well, for sure.
In their Flexisケ options.
Yes, 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 so if a student is finding they really need just some time to jump in the library and work on work, that's, that's an option.
So, in that last period, I'm picturing our staff in each of their regular classrooms and students will file in, you know, when they're coming in to where Jen has that interest in photography or maybe they need help in chemistry, whatever. Is that student-driven, where are the students going to go? Or they have guidance or, you know, because, all right, fly tying sounds pretty exciting. A lot more exciting than going to getting help in, in, say, chemistry.
Yes, for sure. So, so what will happen is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kerry, because you were in on the, you were in on the Zoom session too. And Sarah, you've been in a district that recently that had this. The students have a window of time, or excuse me, first crack at it is, is the teachers, okay? So, your reading interventionist, your math teacher, every teacher. Because, trust me, when you're an educator, you have a list in the back of your mind, "Okay, I really need to work with student A, B, C because they're falling behind." Or maybe, boy, I saw, I saw this assignment, they turned into this quiz. We really need to do some reteaching on this concept, okay? You have those names in the back of your mind and you log in your computer on maybe Friday or Thursday and you go in and say, "Yep, I'm requesting that one, that one, that one, that one, that one," okay?
So what if they're already in photography class?
Too late. But, 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 but here's, here's how you get away from some of that, Mike, is, teachers, now, Jen for her photography session couldn't go in there and trump Sarah who needs the kid for an English 11 paper. Do you understand what I'm saying? So, so we have a time window for teachers to go in and request the students that they need for that session or that day, or maybe that is the whole week?
In my experience though.
Okay, so, so days?
Days.
Days. Now, at a certain time of the day, that window is shut. And then like Monday morning, and, and, and the folks from Tomahawk said it's awesome because like kids are rushing to their computers to get in there at eight o'clock in the morning and boom, they, they make their selections. Because at a certain point, the, the, the thing that they wanted to do might be filled up. Maybe there's only the limit of 12 in Jen's spot for photography and there's 15 in Luke's room for fly tying and Al's firing project is, is only 12 because that's what we got the equipment or the welding booth for, whatever. They have to get in there, now students get in there and if, if they're not already chosen or selected, then they make their choice. Now, I also think it's incumbent upon us, because there might be students who are behind in four core areas and are getting pulled into an academic intervention every day of every week. We have to be smart enough to figure out, we need to give that student an opportunity to have a little bit of photography time too, okay? And so, and so somehow, in, in the way it sounds, we can build that into our system. So, so there are some days where students maybe who didn't have an opportunity to jump in on enrichment or an enhancement sort of activity for, for, for a week or two weeks, they can have a, a, a chance to do that too. Because we want everybody to be excited about coming to school and I think, I think if done right, this can be a part of that, being excited to come to school or at least tolerate coming to school sometimes, right? To answer your question? I talked a long time.
Yeah, it does. And so is it, is it, is it a software-driven?
Yes, yep.
Where like, well, the student has been in four, four core classes this week, we need to give them a break, or is it somebody that says?
I'm quite certain you can set the parameters in the software to help you with that. I also know that with 140 kids in the high school and another 70 or 75 in the, in the junior high, we'll be able to, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to keep an eye on that.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? We'd get a pretty good feel for that. A lot of eyeballs, that'll, that'll help with it.
And then, just the way I understand it, we have a little bit longer classes. Are we allowing time for some intervention or some help within a class toward the end of the period or something? Is that the idea with it?
That's the, that's the concept, is that you're, you're allowing time for the practice to happen there.
Okay.
With the teacher present, yes. Go ahead, Captain.
How do you protect yourself against our sports programs becoming a program that takes over this and just naturally fits into after-school?
So that's a good question, Captain. And, and part of the reason why that Blue Jay win, Blue Jays win time is at the end of the day and not planted somewhere up in the, in the early morning where research shows that kids' brains work better, is a calculated, I don't want to say risk, a calculated decision or choice because at the very least then some kids won't be missing new instruction. In other words, right now, eighth-hour class is getting absolutely pillaged, especially in a spring like this where everything happens in the last three weeks because we couldn't do anything for, you know, the end of March and early April and to May. So, generally speaking, we do our best, and spring is a terrible example. But, but, we, we do our best to make sure that the athletic participation doesn't encumber academic success. And I would tell you that the GPAs of our student athletes have, have, have backed us on the fact we're doing okay there. But I, I get what you're saying, this, that's an important, that's an important slice of what we're doing and how we're moving forward. However, however, having it at the end of the day guarantees that there's not one single solitary hour that's always losing their new instruction time. So, that's, that's kind of the theory with having it at the end of the day, Terry.
And what's the protection against that happening?
The protection is if we're, we're, we're taking too many. The first step is for the principal to realize, ooh gee, we're way, way, way too much school being missed for sports. And the principal talks with the AD and says, "Hey, AD, either we need to play closer events or not engage in so many tournaments or meets or whatever." I've been a part of those conversations on both sides as the principal and as the AD. So, so that's your, because typically it is sports that, that, that take us out of the building. And if it becomes a, a point where it's a, I don't want to say crisis, we'd intervene before it gets, but if it's a point where truly it's putting students in a bad spot that they can't recover from, then we would make those changes. And those can happen almost instantly, like, right now, if it's a problem.
So will there be some guidance to the students when they're picking their things on Monday mornings? I can see a big difference between a freshman and a senior, which was what I'm going to have next year and I'm just...
For sure. And staff and students are going to be, need to be in service on how it all works, for sure, yeah. That, that's going to be a big, a big chunk of time at the start of the school year, for sure, yes. Probably be learning together. That's right, that's right. Staff will have a little head start because they'll tell you, they'll have the in-service at the time. Anybody else? Mr. G, you're up.
I am going to hand you, this is really small, but going to hand you this. I'm only going to reference a couple of things on this, so. Okay, so what, what's in your hand on what's up here now is just the core classroom schedule. What I handed you on paper is all the specialists, the interventionists and so on. So I'll reference that in a bit. But on this, on the schedule itself, the, if you look at the green, the light green going down the right side, when Todd's up here, theirs are in the morning. But those are the specials, the art, music, FIAID, guidance, library. And so those are back-to-back, I'll talk about that more in a couple of minutes. The pink areas are the ELA rotation and that is reserved for our specialists, our special ed teachers, our interventionists and other support staff to get into those, to work with kids while the teacher is running the classroom. So there's, there's a lot of co-planning, co-teaching going on there. And then the win time, the what I need time that Justin's already talked about a little bit, a little bit of difference at the elementary level, but I'll get into that shortly. So basically on the schedule, if it's in color, it's a protected area. And if it's in white, it's, it's the other classes that are kind of secondary. When we, not secondary in terms of importance, but as we're planning the schedule, we have to get staff into those colored areas versus the white ones are more, the teacher runs it. We still have supports there, but it's not like an all-hands-on-type of approach, okay? I will come back to this if we need to. All right, so when we, as an admin team, sat down and talked about scheduling, these are the elementary, these were kind of the priorities. This is kind of small, I guess, but these were our goals, our starting goals of what we wanted to do with the elementary schedule. I'm just going to kind of go through those, talk about them briefly. And you'll see check marks by all of them. They're either wholly met or partially met by this schedule with that exception of the last one, which I'll talk about. The first one was start with a blank slate and look for efficiencies in how we utilize personnel and shared staff. And thank you, I guess, to the admin team and to Terry for kind of taking this approach because in the past it's been, here's the 712 schedule, elementary buildings, you guys figure out where you can plug people in. So, just to give you one example, in our PE, when we, when we pulled a PE teacher to teach elementary, we were utilizing five different periods from that 712 schedule. So, if you have a 47 or 48-minute block and our elementaries are half an hour, that teacher has some time in there that, that was wasted, I don't want to say wasted time, but it's not instructional time, okay? So we went from five down to, if you look at that schedule in green, it's, it's two and a half hours. It's two and a half periods. It's the two periods preceding the, the Blue Jay time that Justin just talked about and like sixth and seventh period. So we're now going to do, be able to be more efficient with our use of staff and that goes for both FIAID, music, not so much art because we have our own elementary art teacher. But I think we're finding efficiencies in how we use our personnel. Second here, maximize teacher preparation time and allow for fewer interruptions. Guarantee preparation periods for all teachers. So if you look at those green, they're back-to-back, the teachers have 60 minutes of prep time. It also, I'll talk about that. If you look down at the bottom where you see Wendy, Terry, Kylie on those bottom three of four slots there, the green areas where they have prep line up with a set of teachers up above. So for instance, Wendy, if she's, if she's got fifth and sixth grade kids, her prep time lines up with at least a half an hour out of fifth and a half an hour to sixth. So the special ed staff and the teaching staff and possibly the interventionists can all plan at the same time. They have a common planning time, they can plan for teaching together, they can talk about the kids they have in common and what they're doing. We don't have, we didn't have that right now, almost, there's no intentional scheduling of that. So we're, that's what we're doing there. We are also guaranteeing that prep time for every teacher on here. In the past, special ed teachers' schedules were so disjointed, they didn't necessarily get prep time or it was 10 minutes here and five there. The same with our interventionists and our specialists. Like Aaron as an art teacher didn't necessarily have very much prep time at all. Or the music teacher like when, well, Mr. Schreiber, for example, you're going between buildings, you don't get a lot of prep. So it guarantees them a continual set of prep minutes as well, okay? Third, schedule planning time to include co-planning, I just talked about that. Next one, make specials times more predictable in the schedule. So again, going back to these green spots, this is the same every day. So it's every day I have, from 12:30 to 1:30, I have my, my kids have specials, I have planning time. The way the schedule works now with all the pieces that are left over, it's like I have 20 minutes here, I have 45 minutes here, I have 30 here, I have 10 here. So they're all disjointed, this is very predictable. So every day those set of teachers knows I have this hour to prep, I have, I can plan for that, okay? Next one, give elementary buildings one teacher per special area. So I'll use the FIAID example again. My teachers in my building, and Todd's a little different because he has Charlie all the time right now, but some years they would have Mr. Stebbitts, Mr. Volk and/or Mrs. Loesch. Even some classes had one with one teacher and the two others in the week with a different teacher. And that's not really conducive to the best experience. So in this schedule, in Todd's building, and I don't want to take all Todd's talking points. In Todd's building, he's always had Charlie Volk over there. So the kids all have that same experience all the way through. They have that same teacher hopefully all the way through their experience. And over here now, it'll just be one of the two teachers, we're not dividing that up. There is one exception to that because I won't get into the minutia of why, but there's one day where I have to have Charlie cover, it's half the classes just for one period once a week. So this also is freeing up time in Charlie's schedule where he's not, I don't believe in Justin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think he's teaching 712 classes in, in the proposed schedule. So he's got, other than that one day a week, he's got a lot more AD time. So we're able to, because of those efficiencies, we're able to pull some more time out for, for that AD piece. That was kind of a side benefit, it wasn't necessarily one of the original goals, but it worked out, I think, well for him. The next one, I'll talk a little bit about, balance out specials minutes, make more uniform between the two schools. The next one, I'll talk a little bit about, balance out specials minutes, make more uniform between the two schools. So I have notes on that, but I don't have it up here. I think it's, the PE is dictated by state statute, so it's three times a week, a minimum of thirty minutes. So that makes scheduling a little harder, but we do have that in there. Um, so those don't rotate. It's just every, if, if my class has Monday, Thursday, Friday PE, that's the same every week throughout the year. Music, we're reducing from three thirties a week to kind of like an AB schedule, if you're familiar with that in the seven, twelve. So it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then the next week it's Tuesday, Thursday. Or when we have, when we miss a day, let's say we're, we're doing music on Thursday and Friday's a snow day, then art goes to Monday. So it's just like what the seven, eight does right now. We don't miss any time then, it just rotates back and forth. But on average, it's gonna come out to three thirties one week and two thirties the next, and it rotates throughout the year. So we did have ninety minutes of music, now we're, now it's averaging seventy-five. And the trade-off with that is we're taking art, which was one forty-five minute per week, and we're doing the same exact thing. So it's gonna be ninety one week and, uh, sixty the next for an average of seventy-five. And the other piece of that is, uh, we're going to incorporate the art-based STEAM, the, the science, technology, education, arts and mathematics. Erin's gonna start teaching some of those technology and integrated tech concepts into her art classes. And additionally, um, one of those win periods a week for grades three, four, five and six, we're gonna have the whole class go with Erin and she'll be teaching a technology-enhanced lesson. So she does have a master's in, in educational technology. So I'm gonna work with her, Todd's gonna work with her. We're gonna really develop that, um, what that kid's lab is supposed to be and an actual progression of what leads into the junior high and then into our, our Fab Lab and our other tech ed classes up in the high school. So we're gonna, we're gonna flush that out over the next year. I know Erin's really excited about this. Um, it's like, yeah, we get this time, now we have to figure out exactly how we're gonna make that progress. But we'll work on that, but I think that's a win. And then, of course, the FIAID stays at the three thirties. So really balancing out the music and the art. And that will be the same. We've, in the past, we've had where there were three musics a week over here and only two at Surecamp. So we're making that. Right, Todd? There's not any?
Uh, I think we changed it after my first year, actually.
But we do have balance on these proposed schedules, right?
Yeah, absolutely. It's exactly the same.
They're gonna be exactly the same experience in those specials. Okay, we're, Justin talked a lot about what I need time. I'll come back to that. But every grade, we've done this in, in Three Lakes and I, I'll let Todd speak for Surecamp, but we've done this the last two or three years where we have, we were calling it intervention time. But the move to that what I need time is really kind of that, some kids need that extra support. Some kids are kind of on level and they're, they're gonna be doing things to solidify what they have. And other kids need that, that more advanced push. So our teachers, if you look at this, three, four, five and six line up on ours. So these four teachers have a lot of chances, a lot of opportunity to, they can mix grade levels here, just like what Justin was talking about for seven, twelve. It's the same concept for three, four, five and six. So if Mrs. Volkman wants to work with math extension during a given week or a given day, these guys will sit down and plan that all, and then they'll divide up the kids and they'll move around to the, the areas that they need or want to do. So it's the same, not quite as, uh, um, detailed or intricate as what they're looking at, but the same idea there. Our K twos are, are a little broken up, but it's the same concept. If you were in a big school and you had six fourth grades, those teachers would plan out activities and divide those kids. So we're kind of multi-aging and leveling that stuff out, but with the same concept. Make lunch more efficient, allow for exercise before eating if possible. That's research-based. That was one of mine, I guess, that I wanted to see if we could do. Right now and, and for the past, since I've been here, lunch has been, uh, PK two would eat, or K two would eat from, um, eleven, or their lunch and eating would be from eleven to twelve, and then four, five and six would be from twelve to one. So that's two hours. We're condensing that down to one hour here, and that was the reason, the main reason for switching that junior high lunch, so that we could get the kids in this way. Our K two will eat at the same time they've been eating, and then they'll be outside for that other half hour. And it's flipped, the four, five and six will go outside first, get their running and exercise out of the way, then they'll come in and they'll eat that second half of that lunch period. So we won't need as many paras out there. They'll be freed up for classroom supports. We don't have to stretch that two hours out. And I don't, we have, yeah, we, I don't see any problem with that. Um, right now, one of our, our four, five and six eat with junior high now, and that would kind of be the same that's gonna happen. So we just move those around to make that work. The schedule of thirty minutes of ELA rotations to run non-concurrently, so they're not overlapping, to maximize intervention and special ed support, that's the pink on your schedule. So that is where the, the special ed staff, the para support and the reading and/or math intervention people are going to be into those, well, it's really ELA in the pink, but they'll be pushing into those classrooms. That lets, so if you looked at like, um, Diana Blicar's schedule, so it says INT slot, or dash Diana down there. She's got first grade, that lines up with the first grade pink, second grade TL lines up with the second grade pink up above, kindergarten, so on and so forth. So she's able to move from one classroom to the next and, and get her intervention groups, those kids that need support. We have, um, Jody Collada, if you look at hers, INT Jody, she's moving from a sixth grade classroom this year to, uh, a second intervention. I won't speak to the seven, eight. Justin, you can jump in if you, if you want to when I'm done here with this piece. But she's got seven, eight literacy support. Someone asked a question earlier about how they would get interventions in the classroom. That's, some of that's gonna happen in the co-teaching down there with the, that's where the seventh and eighth grade ELA blocks are, if I'm not mistaken, in the morning. And then she, Jody, would move to, you see her, she has third, and then she has the win time again, the sixth, fourth and fifth. She's got some prep minutes, and then at the end of the day, she's supporting seven, eight in that Blue Jay period. So we're sharing her between upper elementary and junior high. Okay? Next goal up here was meet recommended minutes, same or close to same in both elementary buildings. I'll have another slide on that in a second. Provide time for STEAM curricular development. I talked about that one. This was one of our original discussion points that we just could not do because of the busing schedule and the different minutes and the different structures of the two buildings. But we have hoped to get maybe those grade, those same grade levels to have some time to work together remotely. But they don't necessarily line up. So that's one that we didn't really accomplish. Questions on this slide? Before I go to the next one, you wanna hold questions to the end, or is there something pressing at this point? I'll come back to it if I need to, yeah. Okay, these are the instructional minutes. Um, these are, this is still a really old DPI document of what's recommended at each, at each grade level. But if you look at the ELA time, um, research-based and our program that we're using, obviously the more, we need more minutes at those developmental years, the, the K one, two, when they're learning phonics, when they're learning to read. And then those drop down a little bit in these upper grades and, uh, vice versa, your math hour, K two, and then there's more minutes in math as you get older. Concepts are harder, you need more time. Social studies and science, the same thing, as you move across grade levels. Our specials, I talked about, our lunch, in, in Three Lakes, our lunch is that sixty-minute block. So thirty is, is lunch and thirty is outside. Um, and then these K two, or K three classrooms have a twenty-minute morning recess on the schedule. That's in blue. We've always had that over here. Our four, five and six do not have a scheduled short recess in the morning, but they will have the option to. I wanted that to be more flexible, 'cause if you look at their schedule, like their mornings are social studies, science and math, for the most part. Sometimes you want a longer science period for labs, sometimes you want a project time. Other days you might give them a, a time outside. So we'll work with paras in those time to give them that option to take their kids out if they want to, but it won't necessarily be every day at the same exact time. Sometimes you also don't wanna take, some days you might be able to take fifteen minutes for math, but you don't wanna take from science or vice versa. So a little bit of flexibility there. Our win time, those five days a week, one of those is that STEAM block with Mrs. Walshlager that I talked about. Okay, for three, four, five and six. And at the same time that that's happening, this isn't a teacher prep time, this is where they're gonna get their ELA coaching from Mrs. Johnson, the teachers. So the kids will go to their STEAM block with Mrs. Walshlager, the teacher will go with their, to their session with Amy Johnson. Okay? And then total minutes over here, we have, we're, we're pushing this back a few minutes. Our official day start will be eight oh five, ending at three fifteen, like we do now. That's four hundred and thirty minutes a day that we have. I think Todd has a little bit longer than that 'cause of bus schedules, but that's what ours is. I think I talked about everything else on there. And then last, we, I think on my slides, the, the teacher minutes, this is just what the staff day looks like. Um, they have structured and unstructured minutes, sixty-minute prep block, block every day, thirty-minute weekly staff meeting in this building, that's at the end of the day, 'cause we have that half an hour time. There's a thirty-minute problem-solving team, potential meeting, depending on how many kids we have lined up for that. And that is just a, that's a staff meeting with all involved parties to work on. You know, student A has these needs, how are we meeting those? Come up with a plan, uh, develop that. We do that now, it's just at a different time of day. Thirty-minute weekly PD session, which I mentioned, oh, no, I didn't. That, that will either be during that, one of those half an hours at lunch, or it will be at the end of the day, three fifteen to three forty-five. That coaching session is what I mentioned already. And then teachers here have a hundred and twenty duty minutes in their week. So four or five days, they're, they're either on a lunchroom supervision or they are on a recess supervision outside. Now we've, this would be the maximum that they would have for duties. Some, some years we've put paras in different positions to get, to get this, to get PD time or to get a meeting or whatever we need out of that. So that's a little bit flexible. Unstructured minutes, they have their duty-free lunch by law, obviously, three times a week, from either thirty-minute additional, no-duty lunch or thirty-minute no-duty end of day. Those are open for them to plan. Um, and they have, K three has twenty-minute recesses, that's not much more than a bathroom break. By the time you get the kids in and out, you can go get a drink, use the restroom, but it's there. And the optional for the four, six staff. So that's, that's kind of from the teacher lens a little bit. I think that's my last one.
Question, last slide, quick, uh, on the duty minutes.
Yep.
What's been our, I guess, our trend lines, I guess, in terms of, um, for like lunchroom recess, uh, and such, covered by volunteers?
Volunteers, as in non, non-employees?
Yep.
We don't typically do it at all.
We don't.
And then that would probably be for legal reasons, I would guess, Terry, yeah, no?
Especially the last two years with COVID.
With COVID, they really, but we, we've, we've had volunteers in the building for academics, not necessarily for covering any kind of, um, supervision duties. So I, I wouldn't really be overly comfortable with that unless it was like, I don't know, a former teacher, someone that had some experience with.
Some training.
Yeah, but we have had many volunteers for like the win time or, you know, to do a reading group or a writing group. That, that happens frequently, or it did before COVID. We haven't, we do have a couple. We have, like Betsy Coach comes in quite a bit right now for our, our lower elementary grades and sits in rooms and, and supports the teacher in what a para would normally do. Not that they're displacing one, it's just an extra body that, that contributes to the helping the kids. I don't know if that answers your question, or?
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Okay. Any other questions? Too much information on.
Is, are his comparisons to years of, or, uh, minutes of instructional time with this new plan compared to where we're at right now, uh, in some of the core areas? How does that compare?
I would say the, the minutes in the day of instruction are, are probably on paper the same or similar. The four, well, we increased by ten, so it was probably about four hundred and twenty before. But there were a lot of, there was a lot more teacher discretion in what they put into their day. So I would say the ELA minutes are drastically up from probably from three years ago. And that's by design. We have specific goals with that. Other than that, I, I wouldn't say it's that different at all.
So ELA is up, math, social sciences are about the same?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Trying to think, anything else with that question, Todd?
No, I mean, compared to last year, really, the schedules are relatively same.
It's similar.
The big difference is we tried to squeeze the specials together to get that hour long break. And then adding win time, which we already had half hour intervention, but now we're trying to strategically put it at the end of the day or in the same block. So that's really the big changes, I guess.
The other, the other thing that we've talked with teachers about is when you, when you see these seventy-five minute block, they, they know their kids and they have to know, okay, it's time for a movement break, it's time for a brain break. Let's have some fun for five minutes before we move on. So obviously you have more of those at, at K two than you do necessarily at four, five, six, but they happen all over the place. So it's not, we're, we're very cognizant of that and, and teachers have that ability to, to build those in. I mean, you, you're teaching and you can just feel it. It's like, okay, guys, we, we need this. So they'll, they'll either, you know, they'll go for a walk, they'll put something, a little, a little movement thing up on the smartboard and they'll go through movements with singing or movements with clapping, whatever it is. You know, they find those kinds of things. So it's not like they're, when you see, you know, the whole morning here with sitting, they're not sitting in seats that whole time, and it's not like it's one thing. I don't know. That's, yeah.
That was gonna be my question, 'cause I was looking at these, you know, like kindergarten and first grade and you, you know, you got them scheduled for math from eight until nine fifteen.
It's an hour, yeah.
Who, boy!
Yeah, yeah. So when you see like, like kindergarten math, so the kids come in, obviously, they get kind of settled in. They, they have a routine they follow. And there's probably fifteen or twenty minutes where it's that whole routine of the calendar and the numbers. So that's part of their math, but it's not like, here's an hour-long math lesson, that's broken up. And at kindergarten, it's like you gotta, every ten or fifteen minutes, you're changing an activity.
Yeah.
They don't make it anymore. I was in four K today, I found out. It's like, uh, they, they just wanna share everything with you. Forget, my kids are older, so you forget how, that's fun though. It's fun to be in there, so.
Yeah.
Any other, I'll let Todd go and then you guys, if you have more questions. Yeah, we can both, I mean, yeah, it's pretty much the same.
All right. So basically Surecamp, because of the way specials line up, everything is flipped. So the specials that Steve would've had here after lunch are in the morning for us. I tried to really get the older kids having specials first, just because, uh, K one, two really wanted to start their day with reading. This is when they're ready to go with reading kind of stuff, so, um, that's where I put that. I did put four K in here too, so you can kind of take a quick glance to what that kind of looks like, just after our conversations we had with both teachers. So.
What's the G and L? I, I apologize, I made a mistake.
Guidance and library. So we're running PE three days a week, 'cause that's what we're required to do, and then the other two, they'd be in guidance and library. And I don't know if this, this is probably why you have Charlie doing a couple of classes, but just because it's three days a week, obviously there's only five days, so you can't, like, I paired up fifth and sixth grade here together, because on Wednesdays, we're just gonna put both classes together. We're doing that now and then I don't have to have a weird time. But then the issue then comes up here, like, fourth grade is gonna have PE Mondays and Thursdays, but then on Friday, they're not gonna be able to have it at the same time, because third grade will have it that time. So then that just pushes somebody else down the line. So just kind of the way it ended up having to work, so. Just like Steve's, music and art will be every other day, AB days, so. I really like the win time at the end of the day, just because I can see myself and Marcy kind of swapping kids a little bit. I'm more of a math-type brain and she's more of a grammar-spelling type brain. So I have no problem teaching fifth grade, fourth grade math or helping those kids out, so I'm, I'm looking forward to that. And also similar with Kara in second grade, just a little bit more math-based. But relative, it's, it's exactly the same as far as instructional minutes goes, it's just kind of flipped with the specials. Obviously, you see the recesses up there, um, that's always kind of hot topic. But we are running more of a forty-five-minute lunch, just because we don't have any space to share. So we can kind of take our time in that. As long as all the FIAID classes are done, we can give them a forty-five-minute lunch and then they stay in there. So typically speaking. So typically speaking, they eat within twenty minutes and then the last twenty minutes, they're outside. So, um, once the three younger grades are out, then we kinda move in the older grades, the three, four, five, six, um, and just cycle them through that way. So that's, we pick up fifteen minutes there from our lunch, which then kinda makes room for our recess. And then we also have fifteen minutes more at the end of the day. And that makes up for our afternoon recess. So that's kinda how that works. It's, since I'm still in the classroom, it is a nice having a ten o'clock break after having two cups of coffee to run to the bathroom real quick. So where I don't have to leave the room, but, um, also run copies, whatever you gotta do, touch base with kids, so. We are, because we only have, I mean, by the time our kids get picked up, it's three thirty-five. So contract wise, they only have ten minutes until they're out the door. So they'll run all those meetings we usually use as afternoon recess. So I'll send three paras out, um, and then have all the teachers in, in my room for our staff meetings or P S T meetings or whatever meetings we might have. Any questions on that? In, in all honesty, the big thing that changes is the specials. I smashed the specials together. And also we do have the steam time, so.
And I heard from Zoe already that she was really excited to hear that she'd get another ARD day. I mean, I think that's a, I think that's a, that's a big deal with these.
It is fifteen minutes shorter, but it's, I mean, having it two to three times a week, it really breaks up the week for them, so that's definitely nice. The big things like I already talked about, one hour block for, for prep and specials. Um, also running some of the meetings during that time. Rotations are, were kind of scheduled throughout the day to try to allow for, um, para support or even, um, Kelly or, um, Erica to kinda get into those rooms too. So, or pull kids, whatever it might be. Win time, we already talked about quite a bit. Erin's gonna do steam time as well, um, kinda working on something that's, uh, computer programming for all type stuff, uh, coding, whatever it is. I taught STEM classes, so I'm really interested in kind of digging into that one. Um, especially trying to work some of the ARD in with, with Erin, so. Yeah, and then try to maintain recess time as well, so. Unless there's questions, but. Uh, this is allocation time, very similar to Steve's as far as all the specials go. Lunch recess, the regular recesses, it, it all adds up, um, almost exactly the same, I believe. So there might be a few like five minute chunks that just because of, we have more breaks throughout the day that I had to short something, but, um, in general, it's pretty similar, so. So it's about forty, forty-five minutes of, of rotation, thirty-five minutes of like vocab for our reading and then sixty minutes of like pull group where they still break up. That's kind of how our E L A program, uh, lines up. So it does, I mean, it does say a hundred and forty minutes in kindergarten, but it's not a hundred and forty minutes straight. It's, it's thirty minutes of instruction, there's forty-five minutes rotations. It's broken up into like three different activities, sometimes four different activities and then, you know, another sixty minute block, but which is also broken up. So it's not a hundred and forty minutes straight of that. And then here, uh, for the three, four, five, six, it's just shorter, a hundred and twenty minutes instead, so. Any questions on that one? Okay. You guys did a good job explaining everything, so. Plug and play basically for me.
Next year, you're going first.
Same with staff time, um, thirty minute duty free lunch, sixty minute prep block, twenty minute meetings instead of the thirty minute meetings, meetings, uh, cause we don't have that after school time. So it's usually during our afternoon recess. Staff meetings are usually afternoon recess. Um, the P D, I'm hoping I can get in the prep block, um, because I know Amy wants a bigger chunk of time instead of running that recess, but I would make sure that that day, they don't have a recess duty. So they would have a fifteen minute kind of recess time and then a twenty minute recess time in the afternoon. So they would still get their time and just be little smaller chunks during that day. And then, um, our teachers have fifty minutes weekly recess, lunch or bus duty. And then also we, they have seventy-five additional minutes of instructional time every week, because we don't, again, we have fifteen minutes extra at the end of the day because of the busing situation, so. I think that's it. Any questions?
Very good.
For me or I guess me and Steve? Really the elementary is, is, it's basically just flipped around lunch, so.
Spreadsheets are very impressive.
It's tough staring at them for just, pretty, I mean, Steve gave me kinda the, the template and I had to move stuff around, but it's still. It's a lot to look at.
All right, well, that was a lot to digest.
Yeah.
There's a lot of work put into that.
I was going to say, I'm going to just embarrass them a little bit, but, because this is something that, if there's knocks to take or some disgruntled to change, you know, I take responsibility from that because I did say, we're blowing it up, we're starting from scratch. Because to me, if it's not in the schedule, it's not gonna happen for one thing. That's always been my philosophy. It's not very flashy, but that's truly the way it is. And if we don't do it as a district wide approach, especially with sharing staff, we wouldn't get there. Steve, thank you, public record. I can't tell you how many hours he, he took the book, you know, my book and, and got going and kept bringing it to us and updating the other admin too. But, um, he really helped drive this so we could get it together. And Justin, thank you at the high school and junior high level for being flexible. And staff, I know it's gonna be, sometimes you're gonna be like, why are we doing this? You know, because it has changed, it is different. Same with the flexi sketch, you know, the, the people that I've talked to who got into doing the win time, as we're calling it, Blue Jays win, because we want it to be personalized to us. The common theme I heard was, don't give up. Get through the third, first three to four weeks and you're going to love it. The first three to four weeks, you're gonna be pulling your hair out. But soon as you figure that part out, it just runs smoothly because most importantly, the kids want it to work. They know where they need to be and what they wanna do. So tons and tons of work on everybody's part and flexibility. I'm just so proud of the team and, and so appreciative of the hours.
Yeah, yeah, enormous task and, you know, and, and again, I liked the way the presentation started, uh, identifying areas of need, right? And, and why we're doing this. And I think that's important, not just change for the sake of change. Um, there are some goals that we're, got in mind right from the start to try to make an improvement for our students, so. Good stuff. Now we gotta do some work at the board level.
You guys do.
We gotta make some motions. All right, so we have, uh, any agenda, it's set up with, uh, two different, uh, agenda topics. Um, they did flow one into the other in the presentation level. But I guess to follow the agenda, we will ask for a motion, starting with, uh, the junior high, high school. I'll make the motion to accept the junior high, high school master schedule as presented.
Second.
All right, so motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll call it to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes five zero. Moving on to, uh, Dee, um, on the elementary side of Three Lakes and Sure Camp. Is someone prepared to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to, um, approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Three Lakes and Sure Camp elementary schedules for enhancement of instructional delivery as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Stacy, second by Terry. Any further questions on that? Hearing none, we'll call it to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes five zero. Very good. We did the easy part. Thank you guys for all your hard work.
Yes.
Yeah, really excited to see that. Everything looks very, very promising. I like the way everybody collaborated on it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, working together, uh, yeah, important stuff. Very good. All right, uh, moving on to the last part of our meeting tonight, executive session. We will adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, one C to consider employment promotion conversation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which this governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically to consider individual staff contracts, hiring and/or resignation slash retiring of staff. I'll take a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Second. All right, motion by Terry, second by Josh. Roll call vote, starting with Terry.
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Mike, aye? Very good. We will go into executive session here in just a few moments. Thank you all for joining us here tonight. A lot of exciting things happened and, uh, looking forward to your implementation. Have a great night.